I've been reading this thing. Some good info in there.
I mean, if we called anybody on my list, they'd be surprised.
Steve Reeves?
He did call.
He emailed me.
He didn't ask to be on the list.
He just said...
It's statistical stuff.
We only get like, what, 60 seconds?
Especially all the first few September 4th sections.
So those who get that coming out from Scott Lassiter.
There'll be a C meeting agenda for tonight's meeting. I mean, he has his number here if we need it.
Well, there you go. I guess if you want to call somebody, come on.
I took him to one. If you look in, at the first card, this list out. One caller, it's a match. Well, maybe we're way too, way too much to handle. He just wanted something a little razzle. Didn't think it was a lot.
Now, when the YouTube people see Jason Tate.
Steve, did you want to be called tonight? This is Doug Courier. Did you want to be called tonight on Acre Ridge? All right, well...
We're live.
Yes, do you want, do you want us to call both? All right, you want to give me his number? Stop, you're breaking up. Start again. 404. 812. 822. 8633. Oh, so, so we'll just call him and not you? All right, thank you. All right, bye.
We'll call the meeting in order for the Upson County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, September 26th. If you would at this time, please rise for our invitation and follow my pledge. Father, we come to you tonight asking for your blessings on this body, this community, and our nation. We ask that you provide wisdom to everyone here as we deliberate the needs and make decisions based on the citizens and the future of our community. We ask that you continue to bless our great nation and those that continue to serve these things we ask. Do you want me to pledge?
My pledge is to declare for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. First on the agenda is the public hearing continuation. So, I need the motion to reopen the public hearing for John McGuire, Old Road Properties, and David McGuire, requesting approval of revisions to the plan, development plan, the limits of the Acre Ridge subdivision. So is there a motion to reopen the public hearing?
Done it.
Is there a second?
Right.
Motion made, second. All official hands, all in favor. The public hearing is now reopened, and you understand that we need to make a phone call. Do you have a phone, sir?
I don't, how can you ever use that phone? I don't know.
So you, you used the last planning commission.
I do, that was great. I don't even know what part of the end. She is... All right, you can see the phones under there. Either one, I think. If you try the other one, just in case. Remember it said maybe one of them doesn't work. If not, I guess we'll do the southern one. There we go.
Who would call?
We have been informed that Mr. Scott Lassiter will basically be substituting. We've been talking to Mr. Steve Reeves, the surveyor up to now, and he said we could either call him or Mr. Lassiter. Mr. Scott Lassiter? Mr. Lassiter, this is Doug Courier with Upson County. We spoke with Steve Reeves, and he deferred to you tonight for the continued public hearing for the amendments to the development plan for Acre Ridge. So you are live at the public hearing. You'd like to make any remarks, and there may be some questions. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for calling me. I, I have no, I'm actually struggling to get into the YouTube channel, so I have no initial comments right now, but I'll wait for questions.
Okay, so, just so you understand the format, you know, you, you got five minutes, which we start at the clock, so if there's anything that, you know, again, that you want to highlight for the board, I mean, we may not have any questions for you. I think we've got some questions for Mr. Courier. So is there, is there anything you'd just like to really highlight on this, or?
Sure. Allow me maybe to offer some general overview comments that may be helpful. First of all, the, the objective of the three owners, myself, John McGuire, and David McGuire, are simply to secure consolidation of the property we own. There was some confusion in some of the earlier, at least among some of the earlier commenters, about whether or not what we were seeking to do was intended to have any effect on restrictions or other rules that might apply to other owners of lots in the subdivision. We have no intent for that to be the case. Our intent is merely to have the, the change effect of lots that we own, and the summary of intent documents that we submitted would only apply to the, to the properties we own. A second point that to make is that there's been some concern raised that the, that the changes we are proposing might have an effect on the subdivision as a whole, the community as a whole, because there are two unopened roads that would be permanently eliminated as potential future roads by the consolidation that we're proposing. I note that the board approved a similar closing of two roads in the Acre Ridge subdivision when they did the rezoning of the property that had formerly been in the subdivision owned by Rush Ministries. Rush Ministries took a slightly different approach to the same problem that we're dealing with by instead of seeking to amend the, the existing PM rules to allow consolidation, Rush simply rezoned the property they owned. But by doing so, they, they not only removed lots from the subdivision, they also eliminated two unopened roads. So the sort of precedence of, of removing unopened roads and the community's expectation in that regard, I think, is, is already pretty well established. The last thing I'll say, just as an overarching point, is that the evolution of the subdivision from what had been originally planned as a golf community, we would have fairly dense development around, above amenity, of course, is, is now been non-existent for decades. There are only approximately half a dozen houses in the subdivision. And so the division that we have for these properties, Mr. John McGuire, which is building, actually have under construction a house right now on the consolidated property he would own, his brother David, who works with the church there, hopes someday to build a, a house on the consolidated lot that he would have. I'm basically a guy who likes to grow trees. I have no intention actually to put anything on the consolidated lot that I would retain. But the, you know, the intention is not to do anything that would be out of character with the existing subdivision, rather we're really trying to bring our properties more in line with the reality of how the subdivision has evolved. Thank you very much for your, your time and attention and answering questions you might have.
Okay, sir. Thank you. Okay, so we have no other comments for this?
I don't believe so. We did inform those who had commented before that they could contact Ms. Jones and request to begin. Apparently, we didn't hear from them.
Okay, so we have no other comments for tonight. So is there a motion to close the public?
Can I ask a question? Say him.
After we close the hearing?
Okay.
We can system. So is there a motion to close the public hearing portion?
So will.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, just in case. Okay, it's a now, it's a second. Okay, the public hearing phase is closed. Commissioner Jones, do you want to wait until you hear from?
Yeah, that's it. That's it.
Okay.
Well, I'll make this very brief, because you heard the presentation at the last time. You heard that basically, you are seeing the same plan that was presented to you the last time. The only thing that changed is the planning commission had not seen the statement of intent, and after consulting with the county attorneys, it was very clear to me that the planning commission had to see everything involved, including the statement of intent, which you had seen, although it's been revised since last time. So basically, this is the reconfiguration. You can see where the dash lines represent lots being eliminated. There are some, the large ones and the smaller ones. This is a more accurate depiction of the entire subdivision. You'll see it's outlined and dark here, and some of the other property owners are named. I believe my list excludes only one, and that's Geeks right here. So I believe there are 13 parcels that are not included with these three owners. So these would be the properties, and you'll see that they're not represented here, because they're not part of the consolidation that these three owning, or owners are presenting. But this gives you the full picture of what the, the subdivision looks like as it currently stands. Again, I think, I'm not quite sure that at the beginning, when these three owners were getting together, when they, they realized the ties that still existed through the development plan and the statement of intent, and I'm not sure I did either, but it certainly became clear as we reviewed this that while they are certainly separate property owners, they still are all tied together by the PM zoning, which is plan, development, mixed. So technically, you could have commercial, multifamily, and other uses in there that at one time, of course, should have gone, of course. Again, this is a rehash of what we did at your last meeting. You heard Mr. Lassiter allude to the acreage that Rush Ministries took over in the past, but they basically left the subdivision. They didn't maintain their PM. They left it by rezoning everything to AR. So they're not tied up in the development plan or the statement of intent. That was basically a clear cut and separation from the rest of the development. That was not proposed by these three property owners. They are staying under the umbrella of PM zoning. This is the earlier summary of what lots are being combined. There's provision in the PM zoning for minor changes and major changes. It was my decision as own administrator that I interpret these to be major changes, which means they have to come before board commissioners. If they're minor change, they stop at the planning commission. And you're eliminating streets, and of course, very large consolidation laws. County staff has no objection to these changes, and the planning commission looked similarly at that at their previous, or their meeting on the 14th, they recommended approval. There was discussion, as, as I'll at least introduce here, of the broader and bigger issues, and that's where the, this is a staff recommended condition. It's not tied to anything the planning commission did. They did not recommend any conditions. The concern is the broader idea that there really isn't a fully developed plan for this subdivision. There's a lot of holes. If somebody comes in for a lot of permits, we have no guidance as the staff, and I'm going to guess that that basically means it's, it is PM, it's mixed use. If there's nothing that's against it, then we got to approve it. Interestingly enough, in the statement of intent, which you have a copy of, there are some conditions that if you adopt this, are placed on what Mr. Lassiter calls the new lots. And you see those one, two, three restrictions that staff could enforce this, because these are conditions that you, as the board commissioners, are adopting as a public body. So if somebody came in and wanted to do something other than a single family on those three lots, we can enforce that. But this binding summary of intent only addresses those lots, and by putting it into something adopted by the board commissioners, staff can enforce this. But as Mr. Lassiter pointed out, I would agree, this only pertains to the three property owners and their lots. So this is not enforceable on anybody else. So again, the question is, what, what is enforceable? You'll also see in your packet, we gave you the full copy of the amendments to restrictive covenants that Mr. Lassiter alluded to those. These are not enforceable by the county. These are private covenants that may or may not be in effect. They were amended, so that may have extended the life of them from the original. So we're not quite sure whether those enforceable or not. If they're not enforceable, there are even fewer rules out there than the government could enforce. So that's just a concern, is that while everybody, I believe, up there is a, a good player and a good citizen in this neighborhood, that doesn't mean that a new owner, whether through sale or other means, might have different ideas, and what regulatory framework do we have to enforce something? So if we go back to my recommended condition, Mr. Lassiter may want to comment on this, lacking anything else, we could have fallback with the R2. We discussed AR in the earlier discussions, but AR would allow, of course, what I call crops and critters, and I'm not sure that's something we want in that subdivision. So maybe AR wouldn't be the best, maybe it would be R2. There was also a proposal by Mr. Presley through his wife at the planning commission that maybe what is needed is a meeting of the owners up there and sort of figure out what they want to do, what direction they think is necessary, and then they could approach the board commissioners with what they think needs to be done, if anything. Maybe they're happy with the situation, but Mr. Presley certainly thought that there should be some discussions with an opportunity for all of the property owners. That doesn't hold up what you're discussing tonight. That doesn't have to hold this up. And that might be something that the board commissioners may be interested in supporting, just so that we don't have all this regulatory uncertainty on the rest of the subdivision. There are some minor provisions on that platte that you've got a copy of. Setbacks are different. It's a minimum lot size of one acre. It's a minor thing, so we can enforce that. The staff, you're adopting that platte, that development plan. The conditions that we just saw in the statement of intent, we can enforce those, because you're adopting those. Here they are, those three. And again, there's some very minor requirements in the PM, but it's not really thorough as we might want it. And maybe when we put them all together, like, most of the things would be taken care of, but we will be looking at three different documents to figure out the regulations for this PM. The only thing I can say is you go back to 96, 97 with this, and we weren't real sophisticated in administering our 1995 zoning ordinance. Maybe we could have been a little more sophisticated, but this is what we have 25-plus years later. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jones, you, you have a question, or do you need to answer your question?
He answered some of them. I got one question for the landowner. Which of those tracks, since it doesn't tell us on here, I don't know what track that I could find. You said you were going to, you got it, Doug?
We'll get there. It's a very large one, Mr. Lass, it's, this is Mr. Lassiter's property.
Okay, so that's the one he wants to turn into a tree?
Yes.
That one, that one's on there. Some of the other questions were, what, Mrs. Reeves, since this was a proposed road, and it's still in the planned development, can it be, does that get away from the easement that was created there for that road?
This would eliminate any claim that the county would have of ownership, certainly. Whether there was a legal easement ever drafted, I'm unaware of that. Maybe Mr. Lassiter notes, I'm unaware of any legal documents that pertain to that, other than maybe approval of the PM itself in terms of the dedication. Normally, that doesn't happen until it's built, because the normal procedure for the road department, hopefully James will forgive me if I'm wrong, is that it has to be properly built to standards before we would ever accept it. And then, of course, it's got to be dedicated and approved by the board commissioners to accept it. Once staff has said yes, when they built it, they built it to our standards. So I'm going to guess there's really not any legal entanglement here, because we never got that part.
Okay.
I have a, that's it for right now, so let somebody else...
Yeah, I have a, I mean, kind of a question slash comment, just to make sure, so this, the summary of this intent, those are restrictions that we would place on these three properties if this is approved tonight?
So we wouldn't have to worry about commercial development on these properties, because the statement of intent is narrowly focused on those three property owners and their property.
Because I know in the last meeting, the resident that called in, you know, was kind of getting into items that fall under more of the HOA realm of things. I just want to make sure we aren't dabbling into, you know, something that needs to be addressed by some HOA amongst the residents.
Well, and there, there isn't one right now, to my knowledge, there isn't a HOA. Do I think a lot of these would be addressed by an HOA if they're existed?
Oh, absolutely.
But there doesn't seem to be.
There's a couple of things, okay? So if, if these lots are all consolidated in these three owners of these properties, my, my question is, does that allow them to apply for conservation use? I thought conservation with PR zone?
I'm not sure what the rules are for that.
And, and my question is, so, so if we, we amend this, we amend something that we really don't even have anything on, I see restricted covenants.
We have...
Restricted covenants are not, that is, those covenants put on by the, the...
Those are a lot more sophisticated and detailed than anything that we could have brought.
Right. So what about the landowners across the street? What if they decide they want to get? I, I guess my question is, are we relieving them from something these folks up here will be entitled to? Because this is, this, it's one development.
No. All you're doing is allowing consolidation of those lots and elimination of those streets.
What does it say in our ordinance in this development that they cannot consolidate those lots?
It doesn't say that they may not.
Why are we here?
Because you have to prove the development plan and any changes to it. The development plan looked like that with all the dash lines, solid lines. When they decided to consolidate it, that's a major change to the plan, this body, back in 1997, approved a plan that looked more like that than what's being proposed. So you are required to review any major changes based on, I guess, my interpretation was major versus minor.
So, other words, you made your interpretation by, so you had this map. There was no other plan other than just this map?
Right. It's the current platte, recorded, you know, at the court, the court's.
And so, I mean, I think, I think I'm on the same route that Mr. Jones is going here is, so there, there are covenants that we have here. So my question is, why, why then do we need to even have these, these three items even be involved before us? Because wouldn't it be complicating things down the road? I mean, these three, these three parcels, they're consolidated, they become individual tracks, would be treated differently than anything else up there?
Well, when it comes to building permits, we would look to any zoning rules that we have. We're going to look for, on those three properties, to those adopted rules, because they're adopted by this body. They're public, they're not the, the I agreement, a personal or interpersonal restrictive covenants, which we don't enforce and have nothing to do with. So right now, there's a very great possibility we would have to permit something that's in violation of those covenants, because we don't have a set of rules that we're required to go by, except a little bit in the PM, a little bit that you see there in that statement of intent, and there's a few, again, setbacks on this plan, if you look at it a little further down, just a setback.
So your concern is more about what, you know, we, we can, we can leverage up there as far as what we want, but to me, it seems like this is more of the individual property owners up there. I mean, this, I mean, I get it that it's a, that it's considered to be a major revision to, to, I get that point, but I'm not so sure I get the point where we need special conditions for these three new tracks, as opposed to whatever, everything else up there. To me, it's a, it's property ownership up there.
And if there is currently a covenant, I, I don't know if there is or not, if there's currently a covenant that's enforceable, and honestly, I would doubt they might, that there is an enforceable covenant, because covenant's only good for 20 years, and it has to be re-signed by the person who initiated it. So I, I don't know, I don't know when the covenants were, if there, if there's restricted covenants on this subdivision, that will be reported.
They are.
And what is the date that they were signed on?
I believe 2003 were these amendments.
Was the original person that did these covenants, they, you can't just buy the property and then, you have to kind of go through the process again to the covenants.
I would doubt that the original developer was involved in the amendments, but they might have been, I don't know.
All right, so let me throw something else at you, looking at this. This, these three amendments are actually stronger than the original PM, because in PM, you can put it in a park that you can play condos, you can play, you know, mobile homes and everything else. This, this little covenant right here, you can't have mobile home, modular home, similar double I trailers, cabin shacks or similar structures, which is not in PM.
No, but they're directly lifted from the restrictive covenants. What he did is he took portions of restrictive covenants, and again, you adopting the statement of intent, then it becomes enforceable by staff, unlike those of restrictive covenants.
So this has got more teeth in it.
Right. The only potential problem is that we, as staff, will be compelled to permit things through the building permit process that are in violation of their protective covenants. Now, if you're up, okay, you guys just got to keep suing people to get, you know, your covenants enforced, you know? Of course, they are at the disadvantage... Of course, they are at the disadvantage right now in that they don't have homeowners association, they're not organized, if they even want to be organized. I mean, we don't know. That was Mr. Presley's point, is that, you know, maybe they need to all get together as homeowners, talk to staff, talk to the elected officials, find out where is they want to be, what possibilities are, and then they would figure out their own game plan.
So what, what about the concept of approving the request to consolidate and get rid of those roads without the statement of intent? And then, I mean, I mean, I don't understand, then it opens up the gateway for, I mean, which is already there anyway.
It doesn't change anything. It just changes the lots and solid. Everything in the subdivision is consistent. It changes nothing.
But what I would, I would, I would probably, if you owned one of those lots up there, then you probably would want to be somewhat concerned about the opportunity for things to come up there that we, we now, as you've identified, don't have a way to prevent someone from going up there on a one acre track and building whatever. If I was property owner up there, that's what I'd be concerned about because, you know, I'm sure some people bought property up there when these, these restricted covenants were, they're still on file, were somewhat enforceable. The only other way to, maybe to make it simple would be, as you suggested, maybe requesting to have that entire thing PM-stricken and rezoned, something where we do have some enforceability standards or two, whatever, AR?
Where they propose and fill in the gaps, just create a fuller, more robust PM.
I think, I think we're creating a potential here for, for things to be even more complicated than they need to be by having, you know, just these three tracks, these three new tracks and these special rules applied to them and no one else up there.
Well, and the statement of intent is required by your ordinance, so just a matter of, you would have expected in 97 when this was adopted, it would have been a far broader document that addressed everybody, but it's the discretion of the Board of Commissioners, whatever you like to do.
So you're saying our ordinance requires the statement of intent?
Yes. It requires a development plan, which right now we're calling that document right there, as proposed, and it requires a statement of intent, which I don't think this is what is envisioned, to be something that only addresses three lots, but it is what it is. It is what we have proposed.
It's more of a, it's a development plan we didn't have before, right?
It's a starter.
Yeah. Is there, are there any other questions or is there a motion?
Everybody through, asking Doug. Doug, you are happy with moving forward just like it is?
I don't see any legal reason why we can't, and I'm not your county attorney, but I just don't see any reason that we could, would hold them up. And anything that the rest of the community might do wouldn't necessarily affect or be affected by this. You know, it's basically, what do they want to do when they grow up? Because right now, they just don't have that plan. And they need to, in my opinion. On the other hand, they want to go without rules. All right.
But the rules are only applying to these, these three lots.
The rules are only applying to those lots, it's not applying to any of the lots around, so people...
Well, unless those, unless those covenants are enforceable, because those three are only, they're lifted directly out of the covenant.
If those covenants are truly enforceable, then we're, if they have covenants just on there that are enforceable, those covenants are a little different, so then they get a different set of rules across the road, so that's a plan.
Well, they're also self-composed. I mean, you've got the owners of the property proposing those, that's nothing that staff proposed, so whatever you like to do.
Any other thoughts? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, we approve the consolidation of those lots and leave everything else out of the system.
I have a motion. Mr. Ellington, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Jones. So the motion is to approve the consolidation as presented and no, and that's it?
Yeah.
With the consolidation.
Okay. Is there, is there any further discussion?
Just, just want to make sure we use the right term. This is the development plan, and that's, that's the term that's in your ordinance, so I just want to make sure that the consolidation equals the revised development plan.
Okay, so, so that, that's your motion, to approve this revised development?
Right, the revised development plan. Because there is a...
Okay. And that's your, you like that second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Allen?
Yes. Mr. Lassiter, thank you for your time.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.
All right, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, public comments. I hope we have, no one signed up for comments tonight, so we'll move along. gentlemen, the consent agenda for tonight, we're entertaining approving the September 2nd work session meeting minutes to September 8 regular meeting minutes, approval to extend the resolution for public health state of emergency, and just verification that this revision, you know, because we've done these periodically, we're, we're just going to say that our local resolution for public health state of emergency will go until the one incident, the state of doing it, or until we take action on it, so that we don't have to keep revisiting this. Approval of a letter of agreement to Davenport Public Finance for Financial Advisory Services that's discussed in our work session to, for $25,000. Approval of a contract for the Upson County Shop and Road Construction. Is there a motion on the consent?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Right.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Okay. Old business. First is the consideration of a beer and wine license for Mohammed Loudeen on behalf of the Neads Grocery located at 185 Morse Crossing Road. You guys remember, in our last meeting, we only, we entertained this request, and it was a two-to-two vote. Two commissioners asked for this to be placed on the agenda again, and per our rules, that's allowed, so we have it back before us again. Nothing has changed as far as the request. So with that, the chair will entertain a motion on this request.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request of a beer and wine license on behalf of Neads Grocery.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion? I'll, I'll add that I reached out to the principal on this, on the, they had the petition last time for the property that we considered across the street. You know, they, they had that petition with about 140 signatures. She informed me that she did not have an issue with this request because of, you know, it's already an existing C2 property zone, convenience store, that, and I know that it was the highest benefit for myself, it's also a little bit of unfairness in my, that's what I made my, that was the reason I made my vote the way I did the last meeting, so...but I appreciate her taking my call today and talking to me about this, so is there any other discussion, comments on this? Hearing none? I have a motion made seconded to award a beer and wine license for, on behalf of Neads Grocery at 185 Morse Crossing Road. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Ellington?
No.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consideration of a beer and wine license for Mr. Kentucky on behalf of the Golden Trading. We tabled this the last meeting, so basically putting this back on the table. The question that was asked and researched, and we have Mr. Courier's memo, where the concern was proximity of some church property there, and Mr. Courier, I'll just add, so basically he went out and looked into it. There had been some church property there before, but it's no longer there, correct?
Yes, I spoke to somebody familiar with the property and the property owner himself, who said it hadn't been there in close to two years.
Okay, so, so we answered the question. So is there a motion on this, this request?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve the license by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, new business. This is a good one. Consideration to award the bid for Phase II paving project. And Jason, since you went to all that effort to get there and zoom in on us, I'll turn that over to you.
Sure, and it's my understanding that Alex is in attendance, and if you have any questions, he'll be, he'll be there to cover those. But essentially, we covered this at the work session. The recommendation is to award to what was the apparent low bidder, it's been gone through an exhaustive review process by EMC, and they have themselves recommended that we approve as CW submitted. And staff is also recommending that we incorporate all of the surface treatment alternatives as we discussed it at our previous meeting as well. There's a significant savings there, and it's something that the Board attests staff and engineering staff to, to look at. We feel as though it's significant enough savings to where, in this phase two, we want to try to pursue that. So the, as you see in your packet, the recommendation reads as such, and then if, if you have any specific questions as it relates to the bid package itself, you'll see it was included in your packet, all of the details of CW Matthews submission. If, if you have anything specific to that submission, I would ask that, that Alex address those. Thank you, sir.
Alex, thanks for coming tonight. So, so this is just what Jason was referring to. This is just the, the change to the surface treatment, the, the surface treatment options.
So that's the summary of all three bids that were submitted, kind of broken out of the addendums, and then below that, the second kind of table there breaks out the surface treatment alternates, and then a summation of the savings in comparison to asphalt.
Right. Okay. And the, just, do you, do you remember off the top of your head the number of central line miles that are in this? It's close to 50 miles, wasn't it?
The total or for surface treatment?
Total.
Total. I think it was in the forties.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, so you see the, as we discussed at the workshop, you see the, the low bid was $4,996,968.54. Is there a motion on this?
Some move.
Motion to, to approve the bid?
Yes.
From Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilder. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellington?
Yes.
Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Chairman Allen?
Yes. And I just want to thank EMC and staff for their due diligence and efforts in getting this package together. This is a significant amount of load and surface, and I look forward to getting it done.
It's going to start tomorrow, right? I see the government, I have a sign, they're ready to go. Well, Jason will be in sometime, I'll let it...
Well, you know, you know, to say this because, and I, and I hope, you know, the word gets out, so one of the things that we talked about was, you know, some of this surface treatment includes leveling. So, you know, my fear is, and this is going to land on Jason and the road superintendent and us, because we're the ones that are going to get phone calls, when you go out there and you see a road that's going to be a surface treatment road, they're going to see all this, this great work going, and the road's going to get leveled, and then one day you're going to drive down that road and it's going to look like blacktop asphalt. And then you may come back a week later, and it's going to be over lake with surface treatment. And so, just so that people understand that, you know, that, just like we had out of Rainville, Logtown, we did all the work out there and the leveling went down, because it's about four inches of leveling, right? Can you ever tell?
At least not four inches, but...
Yeah, okay. Well, substantial amount of leveling.
It's skinny.
Yeah, so it looks like blacktop asphalt, just very coarse.
Yep.
So, you know, a lot of people, when we did this the last day, we said, you know, this is junk, you know, look at this blacktop road we've got out here, this isn't going to hold up. Well, it was, you know, now, we came back in and put the asphalt on top of it, so it's going to be a little bit different this time with several of these roads, because we're going to, we're going to go follow back up with surface treatment on top of it. So it's going to go from that nice, quiet, smooth ride to something a little bit more robust.
Durable, durable.
Durable. I like that word. Jason, you have anything you'd like to comment on as far as this?
Uh, yeah, I do, and I just wanted to reassure the board that, um, when, of course, we'll get this out in the standard press release and talk about the project in general, but when we have a construction schedule, just like we did last time, we gave guidance to all our motorists that we put all over our website, and the media was really good about sharing the information. We'll include the additional information about how to navigate a surface treatment road safely and successfully for the first few weeks, because, you know, really, the first two weeks is critical until, and I'll let Alex correct me, but I want to say, within probably close to 30 days, they'll get out there and sweep it, and then everyone will have a really nice, smooth surface to ride on. But until such time, you know, the advice to motorists is going to be very specific to those sections of roads. The number one piece of advice is to drive slowly. But it also have, you know, helpful tips as to how to, you know, how, if you get a little bit of tar on the side of your car, how to easily remove that. These are very, very common issues. I have a lot of experience with this type of construction as far as road construction's concerned, so we'll make sure to get that additional guidance out to the sections that will have this, this treatment on it.
Can I ask Jason something? Do we need to put a temporary speed limit sign on these roads then? Just temporary? Change them from 45 to 30 or something until the road gets worked in? Or are you good with just 45?
I think what we'll do is until we get out there and sweep it, and, you know, we'll make, we'll make sure, and I'm not sure about the details of the contract, but generally the way it's done is those temporary caution signs are put out there, so it'll still have a road under construction feel even though the job is complete. So there'll be, there'll be a lot of pouring signage out there, which, in my opinion, has a tendency to get people to slow down a little better. And, and again, like I said before, the, you know, the best success you can have navigating a, a new road like that with that type of service is just to keep the speed down, so we'll work with the contractor and work with Alex and Chris and their team to make sure that, you know, our motorists are aware and, and hopefully, you know, will there be issues as the chairman pointed out? Sure, there will be, but, you know, we'll do our best to mitigate all of it.
Thank you.
One other comment, and this goes to YouTube people and Dave, our radio guy. We are only surface treating roads that are already surface treated. Any asphalt road will not become surface treated.
Good point. Thank you. Yeah. All right. Okay, moving along. Comments? Jason?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say thanks to, I thank everyone in attendance at that meeting, has been keeping pretty good tabs on me and the family. I appreciate all the really, um... I appreciate all the really thoughtful outreach, really meant a lot to us, and it's been a long, trying to count the days now, but it's been a long five days, but we're on the road to recovery. So, thank you for all the kind outreach and the well wishes.
Okay. Mr. Inge, you had anything with us on the force? Pete, if I can bear it?
Well, I'm here. Well, I wish judgment, family the best, and it was good to see everyone at the meeting. But no other comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Ellington?
No comments tonight.
Mr. Wilder?
No comment.
Mr. Jones?
The only comment I want to make, well, I got a couple, but I want to give, you know, everybody pray for Jason's son, he's been a little sick, under the weather. We're proud of, you know, him taking his time to be a father and taking care of his children. And other than that, everybody on YouTube, appreciate you for watching, and that's it.
Sure.
Well, the census wraps up Wednesday, so I definitely want to make sure we comment on that and get applications in down to the wire. And yeah, ditto also on Jason, you know, travel safe on your last leg home, and I hope that continued well-being firsthand.
Okay. And I'll add to, while we're wishing people well-being, let's keep Ms. Mindy in her, as she minds, continues to mend. She was a vendor yesterday, and the same with Mr. Middlebrooks out the road department. I understand he's home now, still got a ways to go mending, so let's keep them all in our thoughts and prayers. And just for everybody's education, Jason and I are taking a little road trip Thursday. We're going to go down to Bainbridge with some of our IDA city peers and some other folks in the community, you know, go down and see a town that has been pretty successful in revitalizing the downtown area. So, the city of Bainbridge is going to host us. And we're actually flying down, local business guy is actually providing transportation for us all to get down here and back. So, hopefully we get down here and back safely, and look forward to some good things happening as a result of that. Otherwise, that's all I have. Any final thoughts?
Anything?
I test if you, she lets us know, she wants us, so. All right. Thanks again. Thanks for getting, keep it quiet for us tonight. With that, let her take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
All right, we adjourned. Thank y'all. We shall la.
We'll see you in the morning.
Good luck to you, son. Thank you. Thank you.